Good evening, call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hand and Board of Selectment and Board of Health being held in the townhouse in our offices in the townhouse, December 18th, 2023. Call a meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're conducting this meeting in person and on Zoom. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Dalton was there, I assume he's recording.
No chat yet.
First of all, I'd like to, just on behalf of the Board of Selectment, thank our highway department, our police department, our fire department, and the senior center for their work today in the town during the storm. They were there all day working on it, they'll be going, working on projects during the night, and I appreciate their efforts on behalf of the town. Do we have any minutes?
We do not.
No minutes, okay. The first order of business is a discussion of the master plan and assign a select board to committee.
Good evening, thank you.
We have Pat, excuse me, we have Pat Coy here with us. Are you chairman?
I am the planning board point person for the master plan, so maybe that calls, you can call me the chairman. So, I think there was some communication from Maddie regarding the planning board establishing a steering committee essentially, and she had sent out several emails looking for, over the last several months, looking for people from various committees in town who might want to, you know, participate, or she identified the committees. We passed them in some names thinking we might know who that might be. And so, I think the objective tonight was just to, you know, get that process moving forward because our consultant is anxious to have a meeting with sort of the steering committee and kick things off a little bit, at least in a call. What Luke Mitchell from VHB had said recently on December 8th was, you know, when they received information that they would be assisting us, they said, "We're excited to get started. Can you confirm who will be attending this meeting as we get started? We'd like to schedule a call to discuss the process and timeline." And so, they'd like to do it in early January or, well, I'll say mid-January. So, please advise on a preferred date and time. So, that's the objective in the near term is just to think about who would be an appropriate rep for the steering committee in the various committees and commissions in town.
It would be Don.
It would be Don.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don, did I speak through?
Yeah, I have Don on my list.
I think, you know, we got Craig with so much stuff, I'm on the senior center long enough.
Yeah. Now, I don't, yeah, I wasn't sure Jonathan needed anything more broad than just, you know, some select people, or is it necessary to have representation across all these committees or not? You know, we had a list of people who we thought could potentially represent all these various committees.
I think in, you know, not to speak for the board, but I know Jason had mentioned when they did it in Lugo, they tried to get a broad input from different departments and commissions as possible because it's not just planning. When you talk about the master plan, it's every department and every facet of the local operation, so I thought your list was pretty comprehensive.
So, we have Board of Selectmen, Don, we have Building Department, Wendell, Capital Planning, was it Pam, Conservation, Judy, Highway Department, Mark, Historical Commission, Connie, Park and Rec, is it Carrie, Joseph? Fire Department, Ed Poole, and Planning Department, and myself. Those were...
Think of any others, or should we have seniors as well? Should we ask Becky for some, someone?
Yeah, and the Conservation Commission on there?
Yeah, we did, we had Judy Brewer.
Oh, yeah, okay, I don't know if she...
Well, I mean, you give it to the chair and if they want to, yeah, yeah. Do you want me to reach out to the COA, see if you want something?
Yeah. Now, as a consultant, is he planning to have, are they planning to, I mean, that's the people that involved, but are they planning to get input from the community?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I have this...
If you saw their PowerPoint, they're very, very good.
His schedule, he has a community immersion day, stakeholder interviews, a project kickoff. So, yeah, they have very comprehensive outreach. So, that would be, I think they're just looking for something to, as I said, kick this off.
And the steering committee is going to do what?
Well, I think the idea of the steering committee is really to, for them to have a place to get input as they're tracking along and get feedback on particular issues, you know, to keep the process moving forward as they try and achieve their, you know, go through their work plan. And really get the input, you know, because I think not everybody is going to be on the ground as they send their team out, so I think that's really their goal.
Is the steering committee, Bob, would the steering committee have to be open meeting along all that stuff?
Yes. Especially since you're going to be appointed. Whenever you appoint a committee...
Who appoints them?
Open meeting along, rides along.
I mean, the state office is the planning board's responsibility for doing the master plan. Do we appoint them or...
I wouldn't think we would. Sounds like you're getting...
Oh, so he's, God, I thought you were here asking the selectmen to appoint.
No, we're looking for a rep.
We're looking for reps, yeah.
So, you're, so you're volunteers for that?
I volunteered, yes.
Because you've done it before.
Roll the tape back, I'm pretty sure I said, I actually didn't do the master plan before, I did the zoning, and this is very similar to what we did back with the Migs grant.
Okay.
Where PVPC did, to be honest, the bulk of the work, just like this place will. But we had a representative committee, if you will, of everybody who could give input into the zoning, ZB, HanCom, cemetery, seniors, and I think that's what you're looking for here. You know, you're not going to take their, let's say, you know, rubber, you're not going to rubber stamp what they give you. You're not looking for something they're giving you that was good for Brockton, that was good for Plonkin.
Absolutely, yeah.
You want something tailored for him.
Right, and I think, you know, this is an important role, just not sort of a, we want real input from these people, some of them have spoken at the meetings previously. So, really looking forward to them to give, you know, really pointed comments and, so I have the list here, and we really, I think, getting kind of going on this in January is important, and what would you think the next step is? Should Joanne and I just...
Well, let me just, Don, are you comfortable with this? I know you got the school thing as well going on.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Me and Mrs. Davenport are getting along pretty well, so.
Okay.
I think it's me being out of the house that's been helpful, so.
Well, I think the advantage is this company will be doing, to be honest, the bulk of the work, so.
So, with this list that I mentioned, should Joanne reach out to these folks and say, "We'd like to organize a call"? Do they know this is coming, or do we...
Well, I thought you, I thought by the email that Maddie sent out, she said you've reached out to these different...
But they haven't responded, right?
Well...
I would assume that Joanne could just actually walk down the hallway and see most of these departments and ask them for a...
So, there was, she said she had not gotten a response other than from Capital Planning Committee, which was Tad Clavett. So, I just, if I were to see Joanne tomorrow, I'd say, "Joanne, you know, we want to schedule a call with our consultant, that's what they're looking for, and, you know, do we, we put some names together that we've assumed might be the people to do it"? Is that reasonable just to go with that?
Or, Pat, if you're here, I mean, go down to the Park and Rec office, talk to Kristen and Dan.
Yeah.
Go down to see Bonnie and...
Go, you need somebody.
Right.
Okay.
See Wendell, and it's easier than an email.
Sure.
Face to face.
Okay.
Do you have thoughts of having a couple of people from the public as well, or, I don't want to get it too big, I mean, we certainly, we talk about that, but I think, you know, sometimes when you're on board commission, you might be a little targeted and somebody might think out of the box.
I did think of that, and say, I don't think there's any hard and fast rules around that, so, yeah, we certainly could...
Yeah, there'll be public meetings anyhow, so it's not like people can't show up and give their thoughts.
Yeah. All right, so I will, I will talk to Joanne tomorrow.
Just head down the hall.
And go and see what we can muster and say as far as support.
Okay, we have some Whip City candy, just take that with you and see if we can entice them.
Yeah, so maybe what, I'll do that, and I would prefer maybe just to at least get the communication out. If I don't quite have everyone set, maybe just get it out to those folks and say, "Hey, we want to..."
Yeah, your consultant wants to get going, so.
We want to get going, so we really, you know, and if, you know, to be honest, if we have a call and we have eight out of 10, I'll go with eight out of 10, you know, just to get them, the consultant really moving, so.
Yep.
If that sounds reasonable, I think that's what we'll do.
Okay, good.
I, by the way, received a message last week reminding me, and I'm sure it's meant for the planning board, that you should spend down the grant money first.
Right.
Because the grant money must be spent by June 30th.
Right, so, I think we're...
And just make a point, Park and Rec is meeting tomorrow night, so if you stopped and saw Dan or Kristen tomorrow, they could bring it up at their meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. All right, so I will be here tomorrow, I'll talk with Joanne, we'll get moving forward.
Are you taking volunteers from the public?
Well, that's why I just said to Pat that...
Is that a volunteer?
Yeah, I can feel your presence, I know. Okay.
Disruption on the list. A disruption in the force.
Okay, so there's, all right, so I'll do that tomorrow morning, I'll get going.
Yeah, HanCom meets Wednesday night, and they could make a recommendation then, too.
And who was that Wednesday?
HanCom, so you might have everybody in place, and I'll reach out to COA tomorrow. They don't meet again until the beginning of January, but I'm sure they'll suggest one. What about Housing Authority? You know, they're really autonomous.
In a way, yeah.
I don't know where they put their fourth floor, you know, with the elevators.
Okay.
We could use them.
All right, so that's next steps for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to Joanne tomorrow, we'll get moving forward, I'm all excited. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Yes.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. No Ken yet?
No. All right, John, I hear you.
Scantig River Water District is, is...
We have a tie-in bond, I guess.
We have a tie-in bond, you want to go into the next thing, the entertainment licenses?
I'm here online, sure.
All right. What we got?
We got them there, there's four altogether. There's Casabella, Lacachina, and there's two for Great Horse, ones for Sunday.
All right. So, so, Casabella, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, six to 10 indoors, Thursday, six to 8:30 outdoors, I assume, weather permitting.
Yep.
That came up a few years back, and we had really restricted that Thursday time, you know, because of our residential area.
Uh, let's see, Lacachina is Thursday, Saturday, six to 10 indoors, Thursday, Saturday, seven to nine outdoors, July and August only. Great Horse, outdoor entertainment, poolside until 9:00 PM, indoor entertainment, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, with doors closed. Okay, that's the way it always is, I mean... What's this here?
That's the Sunday one.
That's the Sunday, okay, and then on Sunday, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, live music every Sunday.
Is that the same as last year?
Yeah.
Really, 12:00 AM?
They, the hours changed, yeah.
Right, I'm saying, what was last year? Wasn't it...
Well, last year it said 12:00 to 8:00 PM, but I don't know if that was...
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
Correct.
I don't think...
I don't, I don't think, do you want to go 12:00 AM?
No, I think we actually did that, we cut it back last year as well.
They did?
Yeah.
Sunday, yeah.
I think they came and asked for 12:00 AM, we weren't comfortable with the 12:00 AM on a Sunday night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't know if we did eight or nine, was it eight on the form last year?
Yeah, last year it said 12:00 to 8:00.
I would recommend we do eight again, if they have a better, if they have a real need, they can come and talk to us personally.
We'll change this to eight.
Okay.
Well, you can redo it.
Yep.
And I'll come in and sign it, okay? All right, the motion?
Well, this has been, now, the Sunday one, we have a positive recommendation from the police chief because that's required for the Sunday.
Um, yes, they checked, checked all of them out. I believe that's all they needed.
You just need something in writing or an email from Scotty, if he approved of the Sunday, we're going to make a motion contingent on the... So, I'll make a motion to authorize the entertainment licenses for 2024 for Casabella, La Casabella, excuse me, Lacachina, and La Great Horse. And Great Horse.
El Great Horse.
For the regular entertainment licenses.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the Sunday entertainment license for Great Horse for 12:00 PM to 8:00 AM indoor only.
AP, it's AP.
8:00 PM, subject to the positive endorsement by the police chief.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. For the record, I have not been a member of Great Horse for several years, so...
So, we can sign these, I guess, and let, and let the Great Horse win, but the Sunday one alone for now.
Oh, we got to sign and hold it here.
I don't think there's any...
Come back in again, yeah.
She's got to change it anyhow because the times are wrong on it. Is tie-in bond on there yet?
No, I've not, I've just gone to find Ken's, if I can find a cell phone.
I have a cell phone.
Going to give her a call.
Six thirty, I think, is what she was told.
That's what, yeah, she was intending.
Oh, 6:30?
Yes.
All right, we have some one-day permits.
Okay, Senator Text.
There's a one-day permit for the greenhouse on Friday, December 22nd, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM. It's a class reunion. Doesn't say what the year, though. The greenhouse on, from, on December 28th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a birthday party. I assume the person's over 21.
You said she got back to, it's a 60th birthday party?
Oh, yes, I think they said, John would know, it's because it's an older person, yeah. And we have a, we have a one-day permit for a retirement party on December 30th from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
Same guy, two days later retiring after his birthday.
Retirement party's only four hours, which is understandable, 9:30 is...
You don't want to see them anymore. I'll make a motion to authorize the one-day permits as requested for the greenhouse on the three dates the chair said.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, what else we got on here tonight? We're going to have a shortened agenda because I pray couldn't make it this evening, so we're not going to do the executive session part.
So, Jen is now on.
Okay. We're going to do just quickly the Theater Guild, just to formalize our previous authorization.
Yeah, I thought the motion, as we stated it last time, I want to put that in a letter.
I didn't think we voted on it, we didn't vote.
Well, I, all right, I'll make a motion to endorse the approval as listed in the minutes of last week's meeting, that is, that town municipal uses come first for the use, and then other rooms can be available as available.
Second, all in favor? All right, okay, I can set off on it.
Okay.
All right. Jen, are you ready?
Yes, I'm here.
And John, it's from the Water Commission's here. All right.
Your show, John.
Go ahead.
Well, the short version is, there was concern...
One second, please, John. Joe, could you ask them?
Yeah.
The, the issue with PFAS from the old landfill is, slowly keeps coming up, we've had to expand it. We had a person on Scantig Road that we had to hook up to the public water system in the end of August.
Thanks, Joe.
Fortunately, the water line ran past his house, and so we were able to do that. So, a neighbor was, wanted to get hooked into the public water supply, but he was outside the original district that was created back in 1999 or 98, I'm sure, so... But, he was told that he's outside of the original district, so he's not part of the expansion at that time. But, we have 10 homes that are within this, around the old landfill, that are being tested right now by WJF on a quarterly basis. And, so, I guess, tie-in bond was consulted because we had to expand the system again. So, Jen, Jen, you want to kick in here? Pick this up?
Yeah, certainly, yeah. So, our first scope was for those, it was 10 homes originally, but as was just spoken to, that 98 ended up needing to get hooked up now and couldn't wait, that was going to be in our original scope, but was hooked up now. So, currently, the scope is for nine homes that are adjacent to Cross Road, Glendale Road, and the southern end of South Munson Road. And we were pretty much at the 50% design meeting, talking about the project, and were notified that Mass DEP provided an additional 10 homes that they wanted monitoring to begin on for the town. So, the town reached out to us and asked, you know, what would be the cost construction as well as an amendment to our existing design contract to add these additional 10 homes to the construction scope? So, that's what we presented, Amendment One to our existing contract. Do you want me to go into details about the scope of that, or...
Let me backtrack. So, there's nine originally, and then this was 19?
Yeah, so it was 10 originally, one ended up getting, taken care of already, and now an additional 10, so 19 total would be in the scope of the original contract plus the amendment.
Well, I guess I'm missing it. The original part was adding those 10 homes to begin with.
Yes.
So, the original scope was replay, basically upgrading the water supply area, if you will, the pump, the tanks and stuff, adding the 10 homes. That was always the original scope.
Correct, and now there's an additional 10.
No, they're not. There's an additional 10?
For the Amendment One, yes.
Yes. So, there's 30 homes going to be on the district?
No, 20.
Right, so we always...
Mine's the one that's already hooked up.
That's my point. These homes are already on the district. We have a district that includes homes, and so, the original scope was adding the 10 homes because we didn't want to pay the testing for. So, we, the original scope, we weren't adding anymore, that's the 10 we're adding, we're not adding them twice.
Well, they've expanded.
They've expanded.
It expanded it twice, yeah, so they're, the origin, yeah, the original, original, like, when the district was formed, it was 16...
I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the 2001.
Yep.
Because those homes are hooked up to the district already.
Yep.
So, the part of the plan was expanding the source, that is, you're going to put a couple new tanks in?
So, that would be not, that'd be 10 homes, that's now nine because you guys took care of one of them, and then additional 10.
No, no. Correct me if I'm wrong, the nine, the one we took care of was never in the original 10. There were 10 homes being added to your original list of homes, of which one got hooked up because we did it immediately.
Correct.
There's still nine more to hook up. There aren't 10 more after that, that I know of. Right there.
There are, it's the additional down Scantig Road and South Munson.
But that's the 10 we've been talking about all along. Well, they expanded the system, they added at least two more, four more homes, homes on Scantig Road, two more homes up on South Munson Road. Yeah, and those are the ones we have to do PFAS testing on now, we want to bring them into the district, but that's the same 10 homes, that's now down to nine because we hooked up 98. There aren't, by the time you're all said and done, you should, the district would be 20 homes, of which 10 were the original and 10 are new ones, one of which got hooked up on, by ourselves already. Plus, excuse me, plus the three over here, but we're not really, yeah, right. There aren't, because it sounds like you're talking about adding 10 twice, and that's not where, that wasn't...
Did they get the homes on Glendale?
So, that's part of our original scope, is the Glendale one.
And all of, all of Cross Road, correct?
Correct, yeah.
But, I thought the original scope was, you had a list of homes from DEP that they wanted PFAS testing on, and that's the ones we were adding.
Yep, and we got a second letter, and then the town got a second letter for an additional 10.
Remember the...
So, there's going to be a total of 30 homes on the...
35, 35 total.
That was my question. I don't think we heard about that second letter on.
Well, the second letter only mandated testing. Remember, the gentleman came in and said, "Why is my home..."
No, that was the first...
"...just outside this district that you're testing"?
Yeah, but that was the, that was part of the 10 that we were adding for testing. We went to town meeting and increased the assessing budget.
So, this is what they have, no?
Okay, so here's the, here's the current, yep, yep, yep. So, I don't think we're aware of this bunch here, because we were only talking about those.
That's what I thought, too.
Right, yeah. So, that must be, so, John, that kind of explains why you said the budget went so high, because, I mean, you had a proposed expansion of the supply house area, if you will, and now with, all of a sudden, you're supplying 30 homes. 35.
Can I share a map? I could share the map that was...
No, no.
That might help.
But there's one, one issue here, unless someone other than I have received the letter from DEP, they have mandated testing, they haven't mandated that we hook them up.
Correct. Right, we're looking at that as an alternative to the, because we have no end game for the testing, so we could be spending, gosh, if we were thinking it was 72 for the first 10 homes, we could be spending $150,000 a year in PFAS testing. Right.
And still end up, still end up having to do something later on down the road.
Exactly right, and with, no, and they're not saying that's done in two years, look at how long we're testing things at the landfill, it's been 20 plus years.
All right, Jen, continue.
Yeah, certainly.
Now we know where we are.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion there, I'm glad we got it figured out, so, yeah, so the, the original scope was for 3,600 feet of pipeline, and now with the additional 10 homes, it'll be 100, 1,500 additional feet of pipe. The per linear foot, you would notice in the cost estimate and why it's a little bit more expensive for construction-wise, is about double for the service pipe. Several of the services on this, this amended area, the additional 10 homes are significantly far back from the road, upwards of 100 feet, so the actual per linear footage for the additional work would be a little bit more, but our scope of services, our design budget wouldn't reflect that, that it would just be, you know, we have a base map done, so we'll just be doing a little bit more survey, some borings in particular. One thing that is of note is that we'll need to get additional borings for another horizontal directional drilling. I don't know if you remember, for the last project we worked on, we needed to go underneath the stream, we're going to have to do the same thing, there's a stream coming off under Scantig Road.
Is there a, is there going to be a pressure issue as you're going more up South Munson and a little bit up Glendale, or is the static pressure in the pumps, in the wells going to be enough?
Yeah, so at the high point on Glendale at Cross, we did check that, it's still fairly good, 54 PSA, I mean, it's not, you know, people won't be like, excited about it necessarily, but it's comparable to what the rest of the system had already, so, another location. So, there's also another fairly high point along Scantig that has about 60, 60 PSI, so, again, it's within, you know, a service, operation service that you'd want, but it's okay.
Is there enough water in the well?
Yes, there is, so we did a preliminary design memo that we issued to the town and... Yes, there is. So we did a preliminary design memo that we issued to the town, and that's not a problem. So if you want to, did the board get that as well? I didn't know if that.
I see table five here, I think reflects that. So I know there was talk potentially of a third well, but you're saying the capacity of the two wells we have right now are more than sufficient.
Yes. Correct, yep.
One of the reason why we want to renovate, if you wish, or rebuild a new pump house, is to give us the capacity. Because we'll be pumping, the pressure will be created outside the tank, not into the tank. Right now, the wells are providing the pressure along with the compressor to give us a but now we're going to have with two pumps on the call, the outside of the tank should give us sufficient pressure and volume.
Yep, and the design currently, your system is operating variably, so it maintains pressure between seventy and ninety P S I. Our design is to have a constant ninety per pressure throughout the system, you know, leaving the pump house under low flow conditions, just because if you were trying to do that under low flow, your pumps would have excess runnings start to stop. So we do have a hypnematic tank and a design so that during the low flow overnight, it'll maintain seventy to ninety, but under normal operating and peak conditions, it'll be at ninety constant with a variable frequency drive on the pumps.
Nice. In terms of usage, I see your table nine. You know, you show your worst case number, but your what you think is your realistic number for the entire group would be under five thousand gallons.
Correct. Yeah, based on historic usage, again, the community, you already have a restriction that they can't use for landscaping, for sprinklers and the like. And so the typical either, you know, private well estimate numbers that we'd use or title five would be in excess, but obviously it's important to have a look at that as well.
I'd say I'm surprised. I really would have thought the the first group of houses would have the more of the linear pipe required because they were so much closer to the district. And then this list of additional houses that we just see would have required more of an extension at the line and you show in table seven that actually you're adding thirty-six hundred square feet, thirty-six hundred, sorry, linear feet for the first nine homes and only fifteen hundred to pick up the extra ten.
Yeah, part of that is because we're looping the system for Cross and Glendale. So for the number of houses like Glendale one, there's only two houses that are being serviced with the additional length of foot of pipe. And then on Cross Road, you have three that are sort of the existing and then only one. So it's by looping the system. That's why there's more linear foot per house. However, by doing that, if those other houses on Glendale or Cross would need to be connected, the, you know, they're there. The pipe will be there. And, you know, it's advantage advantageous to have a loop system just for water quality and turnovers.
I'll play devil's advocate. John, do you think you're going to get some feedback from other adjacent homes saying, what the heck, you hook Phil up, you're not hooking me up?
Yes.
I do. Okay.
I know there's a gentleman on Glendale who's been asking about it, you know, for a year now. And I keep telling him we're in the process of design stage right now.
But he's not on this list?
He's not on the list.
Do they have any water tests? Do they have any water tests that would suggest that they should be on the list?
Well, they're done quarterly, all right? And the one for December is not finished because an individual has been asking for it. And so they got the results, but the consultant was not able to review them today because he's been sick. But he's saying that there seems does not seem to be any issues with the private wells or results. At most are non-detectable. But the person on ninety-eight Scantic, he was running clean for years, and then all of a sudden started detecting. So you never know when it's going to show up.
Well, were we actually, I know running clean for years, but they weren't testing for PFAS per se for many years, right? They were testing the other, the VOCs, if you will.
PFAS is just something fairly.
Right.
I can't tell you exactly when it was. It seems with the last few several.
Probably if you tested their well still, it would only be PFAS, but none of the VOCs that we see. You know, there's no benzines, nothing like that.
What's last year, Jennifer, last year is when they started requiring PFAS testing?
That sounds right, yeah. Yeah, and I know, and just sensitivity wise, I think more communities have been doing it anyway.
I know that state offered a free testing for a very short period of time in town, and not many people took advantage of it. Nineties, not even ninety, thirties.
Yeah.
I don't have a number because that's out of my responsibility there, so.
So really, I guess, does it all hinge on what the testing says?
And what the D E P concludes from that testing and whether or not they mandate the additional houses, ten?
I was unable to get hold of the D E P person.
Dan Hall.
Dan Hall. I couldn't get him today. I tried. So I wanted to start asking some important questions.
I know you have a fairly substantial budget to complete the entire project. Several million at this point, right?
Our town administrator has been looking on every rock trying to find money for it.
No, no, I'm saying the but not the source, but I'm saying the budget. Not talking the design part, Jen, but the actual budget for the entire project is in the several million range.
Oh, yes.
But Jen, what you're looking for, or what John, you're requesting, is an increase for the engineering fees, of which I believe we approved from ARPA already for the first gap right now.
Yeah, I I don't have that number. It was that amendment, right, Jen?
Yeah, so the original contract is for a hundred and seventy-four, and then this is an additional forty thousand and seven hundred.
Because of the of the last addition, we had to put on the extra homes beyond the original.
Right, so in your the letter from Peter here, it says you're looking for initial forty thousand, seven hundred to expand the engineering services up to two fourteen, seven hundred.
Right.
Right. So to complete the engineering design, basically. We funded the first part from ARPA, right, Bob?
Which we should do to get at least be ready.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve the amendment one for the Scannick Valley Water District Pump Station and Distribution Main Design Concept of forty thousand, seven hundred dollars and suggest that be funded from the ARPA account.
Second, any further discussion?
What's to say?
Hey, your name? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jen.
You need that in a check, John, or are we good for you?
Just a signature is fine. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ted Scherz. Thank you, Jen.
All right, what else we got?
I know we want Craig to be back for that, but that's going to need a serious discussion after the first. Have you been looking, I mean, you've been looking at different ways. Is this we talked about tip or other things, but to me, we we don't have much of a choice to get this done.
No, we have to do it.
I mean, I'd love a sidewalk, but this has to be done, you know?
Actually, John, you had sent over remember that information you said you had sent over to Ty and Bond? For an update on locations? I haven't received that back from them yet. When I get it back, then I'm going to reply for some money.
The money that Senator Goby was talking about, that what was the the next five-year plan? Would this qualify for any of that because it's part of the water cleanup and this part?
I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Well, she said that they're coming all the five-year.
They're regaling all the five-year.
Yeah, environmental.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Bonding, environmental bonding thing.
Maybe a stretch, Bob.
I don't, I can't answer that. I also think that this whole Long Island Sound project might be a source of some funds going forward. They have a two-tier system. Obviously, tier one is Connecticut. They're more concerned about streams flowing into the Connecticut River, going to Long Island Sound from the state of Connecticut. And then they have us as tier two. And the priority for the last year's round was was tier one. So there might be something coming this year that we could tap into. And they also, they were looking, they weren't looking for PFAS, they were looking for
Nitrate. The farming stuff off the tobacco farms, yeah.
Farming, yeah.
But like you said, nobody was looking for PFAS. So now that could be the hop on thing. Yep, that's on the January, I think, for sure.
Selectmen's reports?
We have a I think an opportunity to attend Concom on Wednesday, right? Pretty much, a little downtime for Tom boards in December.
Yeah.
Looking forward to starting up again. Obviously, we had the next meeting for the seniors and a building committee coming up, and that will be kicking forward.
Well, we met with the, I met with the Doug Boyd and myself met with the cap planning chairman, the advisor finance committee people, one selectman, the superintendent of schools, and discussed the the capital plan, how they would present that to the towns. And the general consensus was that they wanted it to be separated from the budget, and they were going to check with the Department of Education and secondary elementary education, see if that's the way to do that. And that's if the capital planner presented.
They still want to do a menu?
Yeah, they still want to do it. They're looking at a million dollars.
For mini chalk?
Yes. Million dollars, yes, and capital improvements this year. The town meeting.
Good thing it's not an old building. Gosh, I wonder how much it'd be then.
We all said good luck.
Okay, well, so town meetings for. Speaking of town meeting, I don't know if you heard back on the tower thing, but the report back in that tower will need town meeting action. So we do a little time to get it done because it is, we're in a little police. So the urgency isn't quite there, but we do need to keep their footprint a fire. They'd like us to approve it. Fortunately, our lawyer picked out, no, no, you can't. You gotta worry about the utilities. They think you're the biggest biggest dog on the road.
Town administrator's report?
Okay, no decision yet from Granby on the hiring of a conservation agent and stormwater coordinator. I did get a message from the town administrator that he is waiting on the conservation commission.
I think they're pointing up there.
Our commission is ready to move as soon as we get a message from them. A recruiting ad was placed in the Times this week for new board and committee members.
Don, will that be above the fold or?
That was an extra eight hundred dollars. I just mentioned earlier that the governor has released additional funds from the so-called fair share tax for in Hampden will receive an additional a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars for transportation improvements. And
That seems pretty broad. I mean, like you say, it's added to chapter ninety, I wonder, chapter ninety is kind of restricted. I wonder if that's the same.
Yeah. What I read was paving, sidewalks, crosswalks, something, anything related, and bicycle paths. So anything related to transportation, either by automobile or bicycle or foot traffic. I contacted attorney Solomon to request a quote for renewing the cable contract. He wants to have a talk, so we set up a talk for tomorrow. And then he's going to submit a quote. The contract for Academy Hall has been let, and the work will begin on one one portion of the work will begin on December the twentieth. Informed that the cemetery commission has hired a clerk. Still working with RISE Engineering on E V charging. Government Study Committee last week had their forum. I thought it went very well, although it was sparsely attended. People who came, who came, however, had some things to say. And I, for one, didn't recognize all of them. Many of our public meetings and community meetings, you know, draw the people who are normally activists in town.
I attended it, and I thought I did appreciate some of the points. I'll say it again, I felt bad that it wasn't available on Zoom for more of the public to to see if there was a community forum to me that would speak to, you know, public engagement. And then I did hear that it wasn't actually even going to be available on the YouTube channel to watch later.
It has been recorded.
Right, but that was for the members.
Right, yes. They're meeting again tomorrow night to discuss the outcome of the results of the meeting. I will make sure that they hear that it makes sense to put it on.
Sure, you would have liked to.
Yeah, it's recorded, so we can easily put it on YouTube.
It's a public forum.
That would be my suggestion. I'm not sure if you want to echo that, Don?
Yes, yeah.
Again, I'm touching base with Bernie Lynch. Told me he has two candidates that he thinks would be a good fit. I don't know when he wants to bring those candidates in yet. He hasn't said. Also, new round of grant funding from the gaming commission. One of the things that I can do is to ask them to reprogram the design money that we received. If you recall, two hundred and what, five thousand dollars for design of the sidewalk on Main Street. Contingent on the state funding the transportation bond for one point three million. Well, the state has not funded that part of the bond. And so we don't, we can't use the design money until it gets funded. I have my doubts that it's going to get funded. And so the question would be, what happens to the money that they've allocated for design? I did talk with the person in charge down there, and she said, send us a letter. You want to do something else with it. So that's why I sent the message over the weekend. If you want to build that sidewalk, this would this combined with the other point, yeah, this combined with the one point fifty-two, the one fifty-two would more than likely pay for it. So
Well, you're saying.
Have some other use for it. That's what we ought to be doing.
You were saying, okay, we take this design money plus the new one fifty-two and put the sidewalk in going through the senior center.
Yes.
Which we had a plan for, although I still think it really didn't address a potential conservation issue across from in front of Claude's house, if you will.
And there were several options.
You know.
For that.
And when we talk about using some of this money, I'm still concerned about that bridge. You know, they all want us to replace the Laughing Buck Bridge. Yes, we're getting a grant that's, you know, going to force this grant, plus the fifty thousand from the gaming will take care of the design part. But down the road, we get a two, three million dollar bill to put a bridge in.
That's a tip project.
Hopefully it will be.
Yeah.
You know, but then they told us they're going to use our tip project on the Rocka Dundee Bridge. And that's my question before, do we only get so many bites at the tip apple?
No, it's all getting your design done. Getting it at seventy-five percent and being persistent with the Metropolitan Planning Organization saying, hey, we're ready to go. And you get the initial plan, and at the end of each fiscal year, there are projects that have been funded but did not go forward. What they do is reallocate those funds. there are projects that have been funded but did not go forward. What they do is reallocate those funds. So you get a couple of bites of the apple and uh, it's a matter of setting the priority and, and getting uh, into the NPO and saying, here's what we want. And since the town has not had a tip project in memory, uh, at least my memory, I think we were in good standing to, to get one.
To get both.
Or, or, or more, more than one, yeah.
Well, because like I say, in that teams meeting, the people in that engineering firm that was doing the work at Rocka Dundee
Yeah.
was pretty clear, they applied for it on our behalf.
Yeah.
But it counts for us. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Well, what I can do is this, I can have some conversations next week with the NPO people at PBPC and see what they're intending.
Goes back to what Don said before, you know, uh, we've got some high numbers coming for potential projects down the road here. Senior center expansion, fire department expansion, repairing this building, potential bridge, thank goodness we're not paying for one of the three.
Hey, well, maybe Santa Claus will drop something on our chimney.
Well, thank you for helping that millionaire's tax, Don. I know you were chipped in, I give you a. With that good news, I'll make a motion to a chair.
Second it, and uh, I think on behalf of the board of select, but I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a happy and healthy and safe new year.
I'll say Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. My dad was always the side person. If a salesman came in and didn't say Merry Christmas, he didn't buy anything from him.
Good for him. On a favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Are we, are we done? Are we off?